And it was my sense, and I think the recommendations in the reexamine were just to go ahead and evaluate that and see what the board thinks on reflection at a later point in time, which is now. And then the other is to review and revise Chapter One more clearly defining the end state that the planning board hopes to achieve for the municipality and the interrelated strategic positioning with objectives served toward achieving the master plan goals. Now, there were, in the Goals and Objectives, Chapter One section of the master plan, all of the purposes of the municipal land use law are listed out. And since 2010, when the master plan was last adopted, the municipal land use law has been amended and two purposes have been added, Purpose P and Q. Purpose P, it was decided should be added to that list of goals and objectives that are referenced in Chapter One. I did a little checking just to confirm that Q is not applicable, and there's a footnote on page two of eight that explains that Lyons, the VA Medical Center, is not a DOD military facility, and it's not subject to the BRAC process. That particular purpose of the municipal land use law, basically, well, it's quoted verbatim at the bottom of the page, "To ensure the development of municipalities does not unnecessarily encroach on military facilities or negatively impact the operation of military facilities." I think that this amendment was really directed toward Joint Base McGuire, Dixon, Lakehurst, where I know that there are land use conflicts between those installations and the municipalities in the area. But in our case, we actually don't have a military installation here in town. So I just wanted to get that clear, maybe more for myself than anyone else in the room. I just wanted to be sure about that, you know? So that can be added. And then the Parks and Recreation Plan goals and objectives should be reviewed for relevancy. And here I marked out, kind of in red, I said, "Look, this one looks like maybe we should wait until we get to the Parks and Recreation Plan element before trying to do a deep dive onto these goals and objectives." So that's just the suggestion here. Interestingly, however, if either any of you took time or had the time to look at them, they don't look stale to me. They actually look fairly current, and I think they read well. And there may be some minor adjustments needed, but I don't think they're going to need too Number five, this one I'm just going to say a few words about, and I'm going to look for direction from the board as to whether or not you want to look with any further beyond this. This one has to do with the Highlands Regional Master Plan. And the recommendation on page 20 of the reexam, "An assessment of the Highlands RMP or the Regional Master Plan conformance should be undertaken for the planning area," which encompasses Bernard's Township. And to take into, the assessment should take into account quality of life issues such as environmental management and how the RMP strategies may serve to reinforce Bernard's Township's master plans, goals, objectives, and policies. So what I did here was just provide a snapshot of what plan conformance looks like. And there are really two pieces. It's adoption of a map. The Highlands Regional Master Plan has identified different management areas within the Highlands region. And basically, they're the existing developed areas, they're the farmland areas, and they're the forested areas. And they gave them names. The developed areas are called the existing community zone. The farmland areas are called the conservation zone. And the forested, more environmentally sensitive areas are called the protection zone. And within that existing community zone are the loosest, or actually the least restrictive policies for land use. In other words, your underlying zoning would remain pretty much the way it is, where those areas are designated in the municipality. In more open areas and areas that remain agricultural, they'll be designated conservation zone in the regional master plan, and there will be mandatory controls put in place for land use if the municipality were to endeavor to conform to the regional master plan. And what that would look like is mandatory clustering and reduced residential densities. In other words, the Highlands Regional Master Plan concerns itself with maintaining viable opportunities, economically viable opportunities for agriculture. And so what they want development, the way they want development to be arranged is in clusters, to maintain the largest contiguous areas of viable agricultural land as possible. But here, that would involve a density adjustment to the existing one, two, or three acre zoning that the town has in those more agricultural areas in town. The protection zone is the most restrictive, and it's because forest ground cover is the highest resource value in terms of groundwater recharge. Keep in mind that the Highlands Regional Master Plan really is all about the water supply of the region. And so the forest areas are really those areas that they want to protect the most. So there, what we will find, if we look at plan conformance for Bernard's Township, are reduced residential densities. They're probably going to look something like the Conservation Resource One and Conservation Resource Two recommendations in your master plan that already call for increased minimum lot sizes in those areas of the town that don't have sewer and that are primarily forested, where we still find quite a bit of undeveloped land and a lot of environmentally sensitive features in that land. In fact, I will not be surprised if we see densities that go well beyond the recommendations of the CR I and the CR II. So within the construct of plan conformance, the regional master plan recognizes that individual property owners that own homes, churches in particular, those are really the two biggest protected classes, can continue to exist and change. So if, for example, you own a home and you want to add to your home, or you want to make it bigger, and I think even a knockdown would be permitted, you're not prevented from doing that under the Highlands Regional Master Plan conformance scenario. Okay? There are exemptions that are built into the Highlands Regional Master Plan, so it doesn't complicate the individual homeowner's ability to use and continue to enjoy their home. There are also exemptions for lots of record that are in existence as of 2004, which is when the state basically made it known to the general public that there was a Highlands Regional Master Plan that was going to be adopted and was going to be carrying all these land use restrictions. So if you had a vacant lot in existence as of that date, you can build on it, and there are exemptions for you. And then there's some other exemptions that are built in. Houses of worship are protected all around the block in the Highlands Regional Master Plan. But in a snapshot, that's kind of what it looks like. It looks like the existing developed areas of your community will be allowed to continue to remain, exist essentially as you have them zoned right now. Other areas of the township, however, that are less developed, more open, with farmland, for example, or with large contiguous areas of forested land, the municipality, under a plan conformance scenario, would be required to downzone those areas or increase the minimum lot size requirements and to arrange development in a very particular way so that the large sprawling suburban lot pattern that is characteristic of a by right minimum lot size, such as a one, two, or three acre zone, that results in a streetscape, very similar to the neighborhoods that we see in town here, that would no longer be permitted. Development would have to be arranged in clusters on smaller lots, and that's to retain the largest contiguous areas of open land as possible. Now, you may want to look more at that in the future, or you may have some reactions right now to those comments, but that's essentially what a plan conformance scenario looks like. However, there is one kind of really big, however, and that is the designation of a Highlands center in the Highlands Regional Master Plan. A Highlands center is a designated growth area. Designated growth areas in the regional master plan are areas where infrastructure can be extended, and they are, they may be designated in the planning area. Bernard's Township has all of the characteristics of a center because it has everything. It has existing neighborhoods, it's got commercial centers, it's got employment centers, it's got open space, it's got everything that there would be in a center. So if the municipality chose the center designation route, that is another angle of plan conformance that would add layers of protection to the existing development patterns in town. However, that would still carry some requirements for what they call Highlands Environmental Resource Zones, which are essentially the protection zone designation. So there's those areas of town where you see the large forested tracts of land, large contiguous areas of forest land cover, that would be called a Highlands Environmental Resource Zone. It would carry development restrictions, very similar to the protection zone, and the remainder of the municipality would basically just be allowed to continue to persist and exist as it does today in terms of your zoning regulations. So that's another route that you could go. There's, as I said, in a snapshot, that's Highlands plan conformance.
Mr. Banish, I forgot to excuse the absentees, so if we could just briefly, I need a motion to excuse Ms. Acese from the September 22 meeting and to excuse Ms. Manduk and Mr. Hurley from this meeting. May I have a motion, please? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. We'll give a second to Mr. Crane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Madam Chairwoman, I don't think I was at that meeting either, so if I could ask for a mo-
You were excused at that meeting.
Oh, I was. Wonderful.
What, Madam Chair, Ms. Mistrangelo, oh, I'm sorry. Forget it. You're here.
Sorry, Mr. Banish.
Who is that behind that white mask?
Sorry, Mr. Banish, you can continue.
Thank you. Just one last comment on this. I think that this may come-
Can I ask, can I ask Mr. Banish a question?
Yeah, of course.
Sure.
David, how many acres of land in the township are in the Highlands planning area?
The entirety of the municipality.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
I thought you were going to ask me how many acres are designated protection zone or conservation zone, and I don't have those numbers here. I did not look them up as part of this memo, John.
Okay.
But that would be worth knowing. And also, a map of that, to illustrate that point, I think, will probably make this conversation make a whole lot more sense. However, my last comment on this subject really is, it may be that when the board delves into the land use plan element and you begin to think about what limited growth policies are for the land use plan, we may dig that map up, take a look at those things, and see to what end or to what extent they may assist you in really preserving the rural areas of the town in a manner that you think is appropriate for those areas.
So, Mr. Banish, what's the decision on the table at this point, whether to agree to conform to the regional master plan? Is that what we're being asked to do, or decline that?
I think it's to investigate more. I think it's an open question as to whether the board wishes to investigate the question of possible plan conformance, not make a decision without knowing or without having enough information to make an informed decision.
Okay. But we don't have to elect to conform to this?
That's right. It's strictly voluntary in the, I should have probably introduced the subject for a little bit more background. There are two areas of the Highlands in New Jersey. One of them is called the preservation area.
Yep.
And within that preservation area, municipalities are required to conform to ordinance amendments to protect the environment.
Right.
And then the other area is the planning area, and that is a strictly voluntary plan conformance option for municipalities.
Okay.
In the past, when Bernard's Township has looked at this, because it's been around for 15 years now, the decision was that it wasn't necessary or needed to deal with land use issues in Bernard's Township. However, as the community has, I think, let's say, matured and built out a little bit more over time, and as those rural open areas of the township begin to dwindle in terms of, you know, the aerial landmass that they occupy, I think the discussion during the course of the reexamination report was, maybe we could take a look at those policies again and see if they'll assist us in protecting those remaining rural areas. And so that's actually the whole point of talking about this right now.
Okay. From my own experience and hearing from a number of towns when I was working in Trenton who were within the preservation area, there was a lot of people upset about that, and they felt that their property values were negatively impacted as a result of being forced into the Highlands RMP. So my initial inclination is that if we have a choice whether to enter it or not, I would not enter it, and we would then preserve our freedom to plan as we see fit, as opposed to being beholden to, you know, this state mandate that some people have been forced into and they're not too happy about.
Yes.
I think it would be worthwhile to have maybe a chart or a list of the pros and the cons for entering into the preservation or complying.
I think Mr. Crane wants to say something. Go ahead.
I think it's important to go through the history of this. The town looked at this years ago, and in fact, one of our planning board chairs, Scott, yes, planning board chairman that became mayor of our town, we thoroughly looked at the township committee, and they believed that this was, that we could do whatever we wanted here without big government interference. We just thought this was too, that this held our risk, it was too restrictive, and there was really no advantage. At that point, they were trying to bribe the towns by letting their coba, but if anybody was, this is thoroughly reviewed, thoroughly rejected in the past. I personally don't see any of these, we can do whatever we want with the town, have these state guides about the state town, so I just don't see any advantage of going into that. And I think, I find it interesting that these regional plans, you go to Warren, there is no, there is no Highland planning areas. This is a lot of political nonsense here, not true for real. Why one town being completely in, across the board, it's kind of amazing to me, so in my opinion, I think we're best talking about this tonight. It's been thoroughly vetted years ago on this. I don't see any advantage of opting in.
I agree with Mr. Crane on that.
How does the board feel about Mr. Demerjean's suggestion that we just have a list of the pros and cons? Mr. Bowman?
It's fine with me. I could use a little background information or additional information on sort of the threshold issue of if you elect to adopt the regional master plan, you know, I'm assuming that one of the pros is it makes limitations on development and intensity of use more defensible because you're operating not just within your own land use plan, but you're operating in conformance with the regional master plan. So it probably gives you a little thicker wall in that regard, but what's the, what's the rule for opting in and opting out? Is it a one-way door? Once you're submitted to the regional master plan, you don't unsubmit yourself, or?
Well, first of all, you're correct. It is an added level of defense to zoning, particularly those areas of town that you want to protect. And I don't believe that they would characterize it as a revolving door, but it is one in which a municipality can withdraw itself from the process at any time without any penalty. So in other words, a municipality can voluntarily conform to the regional master plan in the planning area, and they can withdraw from that plan conformance at any time and go back to, and go back to exactly how things were before plan conformance or choose another route. So it's not a forever commitment.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Mistrangelo, would you like to hear?
I think David should also talk about the cost timeframe to make to do this. Memory surgery, right? This is pretty intense, doing, looking at your zoning, actually doing the paperwork to be able to apply to external non-hospitals.
Yeah, that is true. The initial, the process looks like this, what's called an initial assessment report, where a municipality compares itself to the plan policies and designations of the Highlands Regional Master Plan. The municipality prepares a draft master plan amendment and a draft zoning ordinance amendment to conform itself to the Highlands Regional Master Plan. And the municipality submits a petition or a resolution asking the Highlands Regional Council to accept a petition for plan conformance. That does involve quite a bit of paperwork. Mr. Crane, you're correct. And it's going to look something like a phone book, but not exactly. Those of you who remember what phone books look like. There is quite a substantial amount of paper. A lot of it's boilerplate. The center approach, however, changes everything because that's where you can leave most of your underlying municipal zoning in place. That said, there's at least three to six months involved in putting that petition together and submitting it to the Highlands Regional Council for acceptance and for approval. Once they, and now those first efforts, the investigation effort and preparing the petition for plan conformance, will be prepared utilizing Highlands Council funding. They make grants available for municipalities to evaluate the opportunity for plan conformance so that the municipality isn't conducting that investigation on its own dime. And then once plan conformance is granted, once that petition for plan conformance is approved, the Highlands Council issues something called a plan implementation agenda and a budget. And what they do is they generally set up grant funding somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 to $150,000 for a variety of planning efforts to conform municipal zoning and your ordinances to Highlands Regional Master Plan performance standards. So that, you would have to expect to go at least another three to six months. The plan conformance process, however, you will be a conforming plan once the petition is accepted. And presumably, if Bernard's Township were ever to go down this road, it would be with a center designation, so that only the environmentally sensitive areas of town that I referred to a few moments ago as what would be called Highlands Environmental Resource Zones, or HERS, H-E-R-Z, would be the affected areas under the rezoning. And as Mr. Bowman indicated, it's a belt and suspenders approach. They defend your zoning if you're ever sued on your zoning in those rural areas, takes some of the burden off of the municipality in that regard. Mr. Crane made another point, and that had to do with the affordable housing obligation being reduced or eliminated through plan conformance. That's actually not how it worked out for the planning area municipalities. Some of the preservation area municipalities did get a buy, and they were allowed to transfer some of their affordable housing obligation away from the municipality. It actually never landed anywhere, but towns got discounts. Those were preservation area towns where the land use was so constrained by the regulations, they couldn't accommodate the level of growth that the affordable housing obligations indicated they would have to accept to comply with their, with their constitutional obligations. A number of municipalities got discounts. So that happened, John, that happened, John Crane, that happened on the preservation area side. To my knowledge, that didn't happen in any planning area towns. So I don't think that benefit would apply to Bernard's Township in a fourth round.
Okay. Given what Mr. Banish just said, I guess I'm going to change my straw poll. Given what he said, I want to know if you feel even having pros and cons would be beneficial, or do we really feel we don't even want to go down that route and have him prepare something? So let me start again with Mr. Bowman.
I think we can pass. I don't know that we need to evaluate the pros and cons if it's something, you know, we can accomplish through our own land use ordinances and our own zoning. We don't feel we need the additional defense of the regional master plan conformance, and I just don't, I don't think it's worth putting the time or the effort into the, developing the knowledge to consider it. I just, I would pass.
Okay. Ms. Mistrangelo?
I would agree with Mr. Bowman.
Okay. Mr. Crane? Mr. Crane?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Bowman.
Deputy Mayor Spasito?
I agree. It would be burdensome to take that.
Okay. Committeewoman Harris?
So I'm just trying to understand the burdensomeness. I mean, in developing pros and cons, that's not, that comes well before the phone book compilation, correct?
Yes, it would.
Yes. So I guess I have to ask, do you want us to prepare that?
Yeah, so it's just like, I do understand that, you know, years ago, a board may have made some decision, but we're here now. So, you know, if I'm, I'm just trying to, I don't know that I have enough information that I could, could say, no, I don't want to go to that length, or I don't, you know, I kind of feel like I do want more information.
Okay.
And I understand that we are trying to take a very conservative approach in light of all we have discussed previously, but I'm not sure, you know, a summary of some pros and cons would not be helpful, so.
Okay. Ms. Acese?
Can I just make a comment that the Township Committee person, Harris, the Township Committee wasn't, that rejected it.
Ms. Acese?
I would be open to learning more of pros and cons. However, I would also want to have, I'd want to review the history that some of the folks will, I would not only want pros and cons, but I'd want history, and I would also like a list of all the other towns that have done it. So I would be open to learning more, but I need more than just pros and cons to be able to make an educated decision as to whether or not we would proceed or not. So I apologize. So I'm changing your thing.
Yeah, you are.
Yes, but I need, but I need more than just pros and cons.
Okay. Mr. McNally?
I agree with Mr. Bowman. I have no interest in pursuing Highlands conformance.
Mr. Demerjean?
I'm not ready to throw the idea out, so I'm going to stick with my suggestion to get the pros and cons, but I would also, if we're finished with your straw poll, like to get the professional opinion of David Banish, and I would also like to ask John Drill if he has an opinion on the-
Yeah. I represent some boards in municipalities that are both in preservation and planning areas. And so in those municipalities, some of them have opted in for their planning areas and some haven't. But I'm not aware of, you know, there might be, I might just not be aware of it, but I'm not aware of any municipality who's only has planning areas that has opted in. And that's not to say that there are not good reasons to do it. It's a policy decision on whether you want to say, no, we're not interested at this point at all. If people are uncomfortable saying no at this point without getting more information besides the pros and cons, I would, what we discussed before, I think you guys owe it to yourselves to see a map, to see, if David says the entire municipality is in the planning area, then have a map showing which parts of the municipality are in these subzones or not. If David is correct, that there's grant money that would pay the planning fees to do what you have to do to opt in, the question I would want to find out is, and David's correct, you can then, once you opt in, you can remove yourself, but find out if you remove yourself, do you have to pay the money back or not?
I happen to know the answer to that question is no, but I just say that, John, not to interrupt you, just-
Yeah, that's right.
I know that that's a no. The municipality doesn't have to pay back any money that it expands on.
And the last point is, the planning board, if this, you know, this is a master plan review. This is a potential master plan amendment. Now, I know this is coming up in goals, but if the planning board actually recommended to opt in, it's just a recommendation in the master plan, it's, this is totally within the domain and jurisdiction of the governing body on whether or not to opt in. So again, it would be a planning board recommendation only, one way or the other. And then the other thing the board has to discuss, if you're not interested, because it was mentioned in the reexamination report, in my opinion, the master plan should acknowledge that the reexamination report asked, basically recommended to the board to check it out, and then you should then give a decision whether you're recommending or not recommending. And in other words, if you're not interested in recommending it, don't say, don't stay silent on it, say something. So again, I don't want to, I think the list- So, again, I, I don't wanna, the, I think the list of pros and cons would be, would be good to see ultimately. If I had to guess, after you see the pros and cons, I'm gonna guess that you're gonna not be interested, but, you know, and again, you, you could say tonight you're not interested, but to, to say you're not interested without knowing the pros and cons, uh, you know, I, I don't know if, uh, I don't think, it might not change the outcome, but at least you'd have more information to base it on. But, but again, policy decision, it's up to the board on what they wanna do about it.
Okay, so we're, we're going round and round, we're not making much progress here. We have on the table pros and cons.
It's not for me to make, to, to suggest that you do or you don't, but if you're gonna, obviously, if you're gonna say yes, you would need more information, and you'll have to decide that, do you want more information before you say no?
So, right now, most people feel that they're, want to say no, they don't want more information, but Mr., Ms. AC had a point that sort of changed the discussion about not only the pros and cons, but the history as well as surrounding towns. Okay. So I'm gonna try again.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So, uh, if Mr. Crane identified that the, it was the Township Committee that made the decision previously, I would imagine that that decision was not made lightly. So there's sure, I'm sure there is background, I mean, rather than get Mr. Banish off track in continuing our review here and prepare another memo about something that may, maybe we can just search the township records and circulate that material to, to everyone? And if, if, if there's a reason to pursue further, then we can instruct Mr. Banish to do some work. But if we, I'm sure that the Township Committee made a very well reasoned decision when it made the decision. We unfortunately don't have that history, Mr. Crane does, um, but, you know, maybe we, maybe we can just dig out the old file and look at the old file before we create a new file.
That's, that's a good suggestion. How does everybody feel about that?
I have a question, though.
Yes?
I, I, you know, I don't have a reason to doubt that whatever decision was made was, you know, a very well reasoned decision. I, I just don't know enough that, you know, is this the same, is this the same program as existed back then? And, and so, and so it's not really, um, you know, saying, um, that I wouldn't give due deference to that decision, I just don't, I don't know, are we looking at exactly the same thing as what, um, the committee looked at? Like, has this, um, Highlands program changed since that time? Mr. Banish, can you, can you tell us that?
Well, I can tell you that with the passage of time, municipalities have had more experience with the plan conformance process, and it's become somewhat less of a mystery as to what's entailed and what its impacts are. I think, um, and, and I don't, I, I, I think initially, investigations, um, were somewhat reactive to the very heavy hand of government, um, designating so much of Northwest New Jersey, Northern New Jersey, a preservation area in the Highlands Regional Master Plan. And I think there was very little interest in volunteering or submitting, or municipalities volunteering or submitting themselves to that big brother approach. However, since, or with the passage of time, there are some, um, probably some case studies that might be worth, might be worth looking at if there's, if there's any interest. But I think, I can't answer your question specifically as to what this township, or the past Township Committee in this town looked at and how it concluded that it was not right for Bernard Township. All I do know is that, um, some of the mystery of what this is, I think, has kind of gone away as time has passed and municipalities have had more experience with it.
Is there any way that you, if we found that historical document, that you could update it or give some?
Yes, commentary or something.
Some updates to that document, so you, you don't have to start all, start from scratch, but you could just say what possibly is, has changed? Does that make sense, Committee Woman Harris?
I think so, yes.
How does everybody feel about that?
By, by the way, there might not be, when you say the historic document, um, I don't know what, uh, David, either of the Davids are gonna find, but maybe there's a memo by the planner at the time making a recommendation, yes or no? Maybe there's some minutes from some Township Committee meeting, but maybe you're not gonna find something, but, um, if you do find something, it would be interesting to see what the thinking was. But I agree with David, the Regional Master Plan hasn't changed in fifteen years, but what has changed are people's understanding of how the Highlands Council has treated things and how it has worked.
Okay, so where are we with this?
I think we're gonna look for the, we're gonna look for the written record.
We're gonna look for the written record of some documentation or some memo, and then I think, suggestion was that you see what has changed, and you can append to that memo. How does everybody feel about that? Um, Mr. Bowman?
I think that's fine. I mean, to, to, to recognize the concerns of those on the committee that would like a little more background information, but being mindful of the efficiency of the work we're doing here with the review for the master plan, you know, the extent to which Mr. Banish can create something in, in short order that we can look at, I think it's worthwhile for us to do so, so I'll, 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 I'll yield on that, and, uh, you know, hopefully we can get to a decision quickly.
Okay, Ms. Maschangelo?
Yes, I think that makes sense to, to first look at what has been done rather than recreate, you know, a discussion.
Okay, Mr. Crane?
I agree.
Deputy Mayor Esposito?
I mean, that, that's why I suggested it, I thought. I thought, I thought, I thought we were going down the path that it was just gonna be nothing, so to, to make, uh, you know, to try to find a compromise, that's what I suggested.
Okay, uh, Ms. Harris?
I agree.
Okay, Ms. AC?
I agree.
Mr. McNally?
I continue to think that, you know, this is not a road that we wanna go down, but I, I, I bring with me some experience associated with the Highlands Council and the Highlands RMP. And out of deference to my fellow board members, I think it's very fair to wanna get some historical information about why the town made the decision it did back then, so I agree.
Okay, Mr. Demerjean?
Um, I agree, but I would also like to just follow up on the second part of my request earlier when I asked for John Drill's, uh, professional opinion. I would also like David Banish's professional opinion as the town planning consultant.
Okay.
Not, so take off your professor hat, and if you could give us, you know, hey, do you think this is a good idea for Bernard's, knowing what you know about our township? Or is this a lot of effort and we don't get much return on investment? If you would.
The reexamination report has some observations about limiting growth. And there are a couple of substantially large, certainly not the largest developments that have ever happened in this town, but a couple of substantially large developments that the municipality is approved, this board is approved for affordable housing development. And I think that there is a sense, and, and I think it's reflected in the reexamination report, that it's time to limit growth perhaps more aggressively than past efforts. And I can't tell you what's right for you until I know how aggressive you wanna be, how, how aggressive this board wants to be recommending in the master plan, becoming aggressive about limiting growth. I think as a vehicle to assist you in limiting growth in those remaining rural and open, uh, environmentally sensitive areas in town, I think the tool has utility. I think with the center designation of the existing developed areas, I think it's a no harm, no foul, um, action. In other words, I think that as a center, the municipality would continue to operate much as it does today. It would just be those, um, existing undeveloped areas, more rural areas of town that would be affected by it. And so that, what's gonna come to the surface is the question, how aggressive is the board willing to be, willing to be in terms of recommending reduced minimum lot sizes to protect open space? And for me, it's an open question. So I can't tell you that it's right, but I can say that it will assist if, if the municipality is serious about getting aggressive about limiting growth in remaining areas that are undeveloped in town.
Okay.
Does that?
Fair enough.
Am I coming close enough?
Yeah, that's, yes, that's a good answer, but I, I wanna follow up with, um, had we been in this, uh, in, in the RMP?
Yeah.
Would it have benefited us during the recent coa round three?
I don't think it would.
And would it benefit us going forward for round four? I mean, those are the things that really impacted us recently, and when you, cause you, you did mention, you know, those, you mentioned it in your, in your earlier statement, that recently we, this board approved those big developments, but our hands were really tied, so.
In terms of answering the affordable housing question, it's a, it's a somewhat complicated answer, but I'm gonna boil it down to some simple statements, I'm gonna try to. When a municipality is assigned an affordable housing obligation, um, it has an opportunity to either just accept that obligation and deal with it somewhere, somehow, or if the municipality believes that it doesn't have land resources available to it to address that obligation, then it can go out and it can count all. A municipality can then go out and quantify how much land it has and actually adjust its obligation downward. There were efforts in this prior round, or, excuse me, in this third round for municipalities, and they're called, uh, basically what the municipality is doing is it's assessing its realistic development potential. We went through that exercise and found unfortunately, at the time, that there were sufficient land resources to address the affordable housing obligation, therefore it had to be addressed in full. But as land resources dwindle, then this realistic development potential option becomes more viable for a municipality in challenging future affordable housing obligations and reducing them. Am I making sense? And it's all based on how much land you have available. So as less land becomes available, there's a mechanism available, available to municipality to argue that it can't address the full obligation. That's how it could conceivably impact the fourth round obligation for Bernard Township.
Have any municipalities been successful in making that argument?
Many. Uh, and their character tends to reflect, um, well, they're, they are built out. You know, they are.
For instance?
Pardon me?
For instance, what?
You're gonna see a lot of it being used in Bergen County towns. I used it in Chester, um, in Morris County.
Chester?
Chester Borough.
Oh, wow.
Not Chester Township, I don't know what Chester Township did. Although they had preservation area, so they may have got, I, I never looked closely at their plan, so I don't know how that shook out. Uh, Mr. Drill, I'm sure, has municipalities that he's represented that have used, that have adjusted their affordable housing obligations using this.
Right, but, but again, David, the ones that I've had, they've had some area that have been preservation and other areas and planning.
Right.
And in, in that case, to opt in, um, it's a lot easier decision, because if you already have land in the preservation area, you basically already have this added layer of a state agency over you. And, and again, I said, I don't, Bernard Township is the only township in which I represent a board where they're only in a planning area.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know which board member made the comment, but it was, it's true that it is, again, if you'd made the list of pros and cons, on the list of cons, in my opinion will be, that the development of whatever area is in, has been opted in, is going to have, it's also gonna have to go to the Highlands Council, not just to the Planning Board or the Board of Adjustment for approval. It absolutely adds another layer of, um, review and approval, and it's not local, it is the state agency. And I don't know why the Township Committee fifteen years ago decided not to do it, but I'll bet you that that might be the primary reason.
Wouldn't surprise me at all, yeah, I, I, I agree. But I would not be surprised if that were their line of reasoning.
Right, and, and so again, the, the answer to the specific question is, what impact would it have on, um, the affordable housing obligation? I think it's unclear, because in municipalities that, that, my municipalities where I'm also the affordable housing attorney, where they, there is land in a preservation area, the number has definitely gone down because of it. But again, that's why, David, if you could try to find out how many municipalities are, have circumstances like Bernard's, where there's no preservation area, only planning area?
Chester Borough is the only one I know firsthand that's done it, but I, I, I'll have to look and see which others.
Yeah, and then it would also be interesting to look to see what impact it had on their affordable housing obligation number. Because what David, what David was just talking about is called a vacant land adjustment. And that's whether or not you have, um, sufficient land that you can meet your number. I don't know if opting in is going to make land not available that would otherwise be available, but I'll, again, I will bet you that if you look at what happened in Chester, you'll get a better idea and will be able to better advise the board on what impact, if any, it would have on affordable housing obligation.
Well, they, they got, I, I will just say this very quickly, they got a vacant land adjustment on the basis of their existing physical conditions. It did not have anything to do.
Right, it has nothing to do with whether or not they opted into the Highlands.
Right.
So have we amended what we've asked you to do now?
Yes.
It's been extended to talk about affordable housing?
I'm going to, okay, I'm go, yes, can do that. I'm gonna ask for Dave's help in tracking down whatever written record may exist based on, or, or, about past decision making related to Highlands Plan Conformance. I'm going to look for examples of who else pursued it, um, that, municipalities that are similarly situated to Bernard's, meaning all planning area. And you asked for something that I'm not clear on, Jennifer, which is, you want a little bit more about the history of it? Can you just say a little more about that?
It was related to the, the things that Mr. Crane spoke about, right?
Oh, that history, okay.
Yeah, the history is to the rationale.
Mm-hmm.
And like I said, it, it goes back to, why bother doing it? As long as we have that rationale, then we can make an informed decision.
Okay, thank you.
So is everybody comfortable with what Mr. Banish is gonna do on there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
No. I, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with, um, Committee Man Esposito's, uh, recommendation that if we wanna go back and look at, you know, the historical documents, if any, um, but I see no reason to, uh, spend any money looking into this issue any further, but that's, that's my opinion.
I think most people wanna go forward and have Mr. Banish do this for the board. Is that correct?
Yes.
With one exception?
Yes.
Okay. Are you clear, Mr. Banish, on what you have to do?
Yeah, I think I may, um, collect two hundred before I pass go, um, or, or as I pass go, just to make sure, I'm, I'm checking in and making sure I'm doing what, what you all are expecting. So it's, we're gonna start out with a slow crawl, find out what paper trail exists, start with that, and then build from there. Once the planning board satisfies itself, it has more curiosity about it, if it does. Okay?
Just to keep in mind, we are under somewhat of a budget constraint for this year.
Understood.
Although we don't have, we're probably only gonna have two, this meeting and a November meeting for the master plan. And, uh, Mr. Banish is gonna prepare something for me next week in terms of what he thinks the 2021 effort would be budget wise, since it does not go industrial. So we have to be very mindful of that going into 2021. Okay, so everybody, have we wrapped up this section?
I believe you have, Madam Chair, unless, uh, someone wishes to correct me on that.
Okay. Then let's proceed, I think we were going to your comment six?
I am, yeah, that was my next spot, landing on comment six at the top of page five. And this is just reciting, uh, the two recommendations from the reexam, having to do with goals and objectives in comment three in this memo. And. And comment number seven, I think, is more substantive and something that I'm looking for the board's reaction to, uh, because this, this one actually addresses, uh, that six B, more clearly define the end state the planning board hopes to achieve for the municipality. And I, I have to say, I, wha, what I've attempted to do here is to try to rewrite these as an end state, to kind of eliminate that confusion that I think arose when the board was considering, well, you know, what's a, what's a goal and what's an objective? If a goal is an end state, then kind of say it that way. Don't say it like you're becoming something, or like you're an objective, which is something that is aimed toward achieving something. And so when we just look at that first one, um, on the left-hand column of the table, "to protect neighborhood community character and to retain and improve on attractive streetscapes throughout the township," I'm suggesting that the board could consider saying that neighborhood and community character are protected. Attractive streetscapes throughout the township are retained and improved. That's the goal, that's where you wanna get to. It's, 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 temporally, it's different, and I, I had a conversation with Dave Schley yesterday about how this could potentially impact witnesses as they come before the zoning board of adjustment. When the board asks itself, okay, in a general kind of way, is this use variance, for example, protecting, you know, community character and retaining or improving on an attractive streetscape? You know, how would, how would, how would the board of adjustment relate to this goal? And I, I kinda think it, it, it makes a little bit more of a bright-line test out of it and less subjective. Um, it, it doesn't make it strictly objective, um, but it, it changes the tense, and so, so what I've put together in this table here is a rewrite of each of the existing goals. And Madam Chair, I don't know to what end the board wants me to talk about each individual one, or if the board has had a chance to read these and formulate a reaction, uh, to this approach. And I'd also be interested in hearing from Attorney Drill as to what his reaction may be, um, in that regard.
I, I think I'd prefer that the, the, instead of you're, you know, reading them, that if anybody has any questions about the wording of the specific end state on the right-hand column, that they make those, you know, they say that right now, and then of course we could get Mr. Drill to weigh in.
Yeah, could, could, I have no comments in any individual ones, I like the concept, I agree with what David has done, to, that he has basically made these things really goals as a goal is defined.
Okay. I think you asked that, about the rewrite, you also asked if the, was in line with the board's findings to better express the intent of each individual goal.
I did ask that, yes, Madam Chair, thank you for picking up on that.
We also, yes, go ahead.
I think these too, I'm, I think they're, they're good.
Okay, thank you, Committeewoman Harris. I, I felt that they were much stronger, um, and it did put a bright line to say this is, you know, what, this is what we want to happen. So I was, I, I liked the new approach. Any other comments from members?
I have no comment.
Okay.
I think these are much improved, the rewrite, I just wondered, is there a chance to, uh, just looking at redundancies? Like, for instance, seven and eight are talking related to limiting development density and intensity, but it's for two different purposes. And like I said, I don't wanna, like, micromanage this, but, I don't know, coming from the corporate environment, having so many goals, I really want us to limit them, so I just, if, if the goal is ultimately on limiting densities and intensities, should, should, could you rewrite seven and eight? Is that trying to attain the same goal?
Well, I kind of, I, I'll be candid with you, I had a little difficulty with seven, 'cause I thought really what seven was saying was more directed at not extending wastewater collection and expanding treatment facilities, and it kind of mixed together two ideas that were distinct. I held them together just for the purposes of, or kind of illustrating this.
The rewrite.
Approach. But I was not happy with that one. And I think, um, that I, I'd be perfectly happy in taking a shot at that and bringing it back to the board.
Okay.
To, to look at and think about from another perspective. I just didn't wanna take that license at this point until I got some feedback.
How does everybody feel about that, looking at seven and eight and trying to rework them? Okay, why don't you go ahead with that, Mr. Vanish, thank you, Ms. AC. Any other comments? Okay.
The, um, comment number eight, um, was just to point out that in looking at the organizational structure, I think, I, I think what the recommendation was, was maybe you could set up your objectives to follow the goals, um, right, to, to, to make it more readable or understandable. And, and what I found was there was some overlap, particularly in, in the environmental, I think I made mention of it here, didn't I?
Environmental resource?
Yes. Um, for, for example, the non, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, um, the non-residential development objectives really should be in the land use plan, 'cause it's another category of land use, you know, and it's just kind of floating around out there by itself. So I think that would bring better readability to it, and organize, from an organizational point of view. And then I, you know, I took a look at these environmental resource objectives, and it seems to me that there is overlap, some of them belong in the conservation plan, some of them are actually pointing toward land use plan strategies for, for land use and for local regulation. And I can go through those individually if you want me to, um, when we get to that section, but those were really the two, I thought, um, th, those were the two biggest reactions I had to look at the objectives. The objectives were fine, they were articulate, they seemed to be consistent with, um, the municipal thinking about master planning in town, but in terms of the recommendation from the reexamination report, um, it seems to me that I could do a little bit of work on those objectives and, and reorganize a few of them.
Well.
Some of them actually look like land use plan recommendations, some of them look like conservation plan recommendations. They almost look like they should be substantive elements of, of the plan elements to a certain extent.
The la, the land use plan is the next thing we're gonna work on.
Yes.
Per our resolution at the last meeting, so you would have the opportunity to fold in the non-residential development objectives as you're going through the land use, so that's gonna tie in. And I sort of understand about the environmental resources, 'cause it, it kind of spans a lot of different areas. So I can see that, you know, there is that, oh, and it may be something that, you know, has to occur, given the broad nature of environmental resources objectives, or maybe you can take some of the objectives and maybe sort of target them to various, uh, other plan elements.
Okay.
Uh, the, you did, and then I guess number nine, we're at number nine.
Yeah, number nine was basically, here's the attachment, guys, here's chapter one attached, with some minor editing in the front, and it was basically for currency, um, so it, it, it was just to make it timely, you know, appropriate to now, um, in that first section, a vision for the 21st century. Under the statutory authorization, I have always been troubled, um, by the master plan having adopted, having adopted each of the purposes of the municipal land use law as though they are the purposes of your master plan. And I'll just give you an example, on page two of the chapter, if we go down to number seven, and you know, please keep in mind, I do land use work, so where I show up is at planning boards and zoning boards, and I see use variances, and I see arguments about land use, and I see wrestling, and I see, it's always over words, it's in the verbiage, you know? And so when I look at number seven, and it says to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, and I see commercial and industrial uses, I don't really think that it's a good idea for the town to adopt that as its own goal and objective. I think it's okay to recognize, and obviously you have to recognize, the purpose of the municipal land use law, but in one of those cases that I'm referring to, where an applicant's coming before the board, and for my master plan to say, hey, Bernards Township says provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for industrial uses, I don't wanna hear that at a zoning board hearing. You know, I don't want the zoning board to have to deal with that nonsense. Same thing with this, encourage the location of design and transportation routes which promote the free flow of traffic. No, thank you very much, we'll decide our traffic stuff, you know, we don't need that general purpose of the law to be one of our own goals. And, you know, I think to a, to a lesser extent, if I look at number 11, um, there again, en- encourage planned unit developments, that's really not what the town's doing anymore. The town acknowledges the existence of the planned unit developments, but the master plan isn't calling for any vacant land to be, uh, zoned as a planned unit development, as a commercial or industrial planned unit development. So, that's just to explain that general editing in the front, at, at the top there, under general objectives. You know, the township goals and objectives below respond to the following legislative purposes. I think we could even soften that up and say, the master plan recognizes the purposes of the municipal land use law, and further distance yourself from it, because believe me, any land use expert who comes before the zoning board is gonna whip out these purposes of the law, and they are gonna paint their application with these purposes, and they're gonna compare it and contrast it to your master plan to try to convince the zoning board that it's all consistent, even though it's not permitted. That's kind of how this.
I agree a hundred percent with David, the excellent, excellent points that you're making there.
So that's what that's about.
So you think their wording change is, is, is good enough?
I can take it a little farther, I, I just wanted to call your attention to.
I would take it farther, David, to make your point, you gotta take it farther.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, the goals we can ignore, because we just did that in the table, you know, so we don't have to spend any time on that. And then I guess my next question is, um, in, if you had a chance to look at the objectives, and again, I apologize for the short timeframe, um, if you had any reactions for rewrites, or if your conclusion, as it was really written in the reexamination report, was, no, you know, they look, they still look pretty much okay to us, and we don't think they need any major work. So I'm kind of just, uh, checking in with you and touching base to find out. I could see that there are, uh, a few editorial changes I, I, I might like to focus on, under the community facilities, this would be on page four, under the community facilities and infrastructure objectives, it says, "community facility, could, facility should be planned to accommodate anticipated future population needs." I'd like to take anticipated future out, just to, to accommodate population needs. We're not talking about major growth here anymore.
Are we gonna do that when we get to community facilities?
Uh, probably, but they're, it's a body of objectives that we're spending time on right now, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So I just thought I would call your attention to a few, uh, reactions that I had anyway, to kind of feel like a drive-by and see what the board thinks. On the following page, number six, um, onsite, uh, individual septic systems, septic disposal system should be utilized in all areas of the existing sewer service areas, excuse me, outside, individual onsite septic disposal systems, all areas outside of the existing sewer service areas, subject to soil suitability. No, just take out subject to soil suitability, because you're, here you're drawing a bright line, you're saying no more sewer extensions, not into the environmentally sensitive areas of the town. There's technology for septic systems. If the soils aren't suitable, they can engineer a system and install it. You know, don't open the door for somebody to argue for an extension of sewer where you don't want it. You know, I know these are little things, but they're the kind of thing that get my attention anyway.
Does it make sense that, since we're gonna be reviewing at the next meeting, what you, what changes we suggested at this meeting? That you make the changes that you think are necessary, and then we can review them at that point?
Okay, I will.
How does everybody feel about that?
Yes.
It may be more efficient that way?
Very well. Okay, so then I guess that's it.
I don't know if you wanna, you know, at that point, look at the non-residential and weave that in?
Yes.
'Cause you thought that could be weaved into land use?
I do.
'Cause I think it worked well when we did the reexamination, that we reviewed what we had asked you to do at the next meeting, and then we, fine, and then we went ahead with the next section.
That's right.
So, uh, I know we're getting into land use, which is, you know, one of our bigger sections, so I'm expecting that that would not be, you know, that will take us a little time to get through the land use section.
It may be, you know, there are, I think, just a few areas open for discussion, there's at least one big one, you know, there's a big site in town that's gotta be addressed, yep.
Yeah, I know, we have the big nut we have to say something about.
Yes.
But I think that makes sense, that the board could review that. I think, was that it in your memo then?
Pretty much, Madam Chair, yes.
Okay. So, um.
So I'm open to receiving comments either tonight or in writing, if anybody has any strong feelings about how they wanna see an objective reworded before they next see this document.
Right, and I, I'd like to put a time limit on it, that, let's say, uh, we could do it, um, like, in the next two weeks?
Fine.
'Cause we're gonna be meeting on this on, uh, seventeenth of November, Cindy? Miss Kiefer? Yes. Yeah, seventeenth. So if you could get in any comments to Mr. Vanish on any wording, et cetera, by November third, um, that will give him sufficient time by, by the seventeenth to incorporate those suggestions, so that we can have a draft for, um, review.
Thank you.
This is the goals and objectives section.
Yes, yes. And then we'll also look at the Highlands RMP information and see if we can come to any conclusion on how to proceed on that. Any other comments or questions on this first goals and objectives section?
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
I just need clarification. On your memo, page three of eight, in the middle it says, "Chapter Seven, Parked and Recreation Plan."
Yes.
And it says goals and objectives, and it has this entire section here?
Yep.
And then, um, in the goals and objectives section, page five, there's a section called, at the bottom there, it says, "Recreation slash, slash, Open Space Objective." Is recreation covered twice, in two different contexts?
Well, I can see why. I think these goals are general statements in the front of the master plan, and it is not uncommon for individual plan elements to have its own goals and objective statement. And so I think that's where the confusion arises, but it's actually, it's not confusion, it's just the way things are put together. Is that, is that an answer? Makes sense to you?
It's an answer, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments before I open this to the public, or any, uh, questions or comments on what we discussed tonight? Okay, seeing none, now we're gonna open the meeting for public comment on what has been discussed tonight. I would just like to say that we will be accepting questions and comments from the public at this time, and they may be offered in person or by calling 908-202-6426. And if you are calling in, please turn off your computer or TV and use Google Duo for your call, and you will be required to provide your name and address and be sworn in prior to making comments. So, at this point, I'm opening the public comment section. So, at this point, I'm opening the public comment section for what we discussed tonight. Anybody like to come up? Mr. Edelstein? And is Mr. Drell going to be swearing in, Mr. Edelstein?
Well, it's, it's not a hearing, so I don't think that it's required that we swear anyone in. And again, this is not the actual hearing on a master plan amendment. This is just board discussion, so I think that-
Okay.
Mr. Edelstein can make any comments and doesn't have to be sworn.
Okay, thank you. Please identify yourself, Mr. Edelstein.
Todd Edelstein, Riverside Drive.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Banish. I've learnt a lot. Yes, but you do speak quite quickly, so it's tough to catch it all. I did learn that we are a part of the Highlands Master Plan, I mean, all of the town. I always kind of thought we were more close to the, you know, the northern side, by 202 side of town be more, but I didn't realize we were completely in it. He says, I believe you, I'm not doubting it. I just had questions about the Highlands Regional Master Plan that will the Highlands Council, that's basically, will we have a representation in that council?
Well, by virtue of the fact that the governor makes the appointments to the council, that's, you know, you don't have a municipal representative on the council.
Okay.
It's actually what you're asking.
Yeah, I, I kind of remember several years ago with the last governor, it was a big deal where he was pushing people out and pushing people in and that became, became a political problem.
Well, we haven't seen this COVID stuff. You might have seen some of that this year.
Yeah, so that would be a concern, you know, having, you know, somebody above us that's basically a political, you know, problem. It becomes our problem because it's politics and not really, you know, what's really going to help us out. And I think, you know, I guess we have to really think about 2025 when we have to do that, um, the planning for the low-income housing again. And I guess we really should really be concerned about density because we may not have to spread out, we may not have the room spread out, but that doesn't mean that we, they won't force us to build up. And the quarry is still vacant land at this point. So we need to really consider, you know, anything we put in that kind of points, you know, we'll regulate the quarry in some way. And basically that's all I have to say, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Edelstein.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Any phone calls, Ms. Kiefer?
There are none. I'm sorry, I have to mute my mic because the ticking of my fingers on the keys apparently mutes everything else out.
Okay, then I, I guess we will close the public portion. That concludes the, this portion of master plan review. Comments from members? Comments, comments? Comments from staff? I know we have a number of people who are, talked to so, and Ms. Kiefer, we have a number of people who have sometimes asked to go and by phone, and I think what's best is that they try to find a telephone partner. Everybody has the contact list, you can call someone and ask them to, if they can bring their phone and hook in. I think that's probably the most efficient way in letting Ms. Kiefer know who you'll be hooking up with if you wish to call in by telephone. And Ms. Kiefer and I are talking about, can we do anything for holiday party? Is it even feasible? Do we have something in here, like a grab and go if people want to do it? So I guess we'll be working on something and kind of calling, you know, maybe in the November meeting, basically saying if there is anything that's even considered feasible. Because it's, we're not going to be sitting in the Owen Room at 6:30, so that's not something that's going to work out. So, I'd suggest that maybe we just sit like this and have like a grab and go and people can order something and go and get what they ordered and come back. But if people even feel that that's not feasible, then we'll just have to, you know, dispense with everything. I think that depends on where we are at that point. We are meeting, we do have an application, so we will be meeting election night, November 3rd. Any other comments from staff?
No, I don't.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Drell, on becoming a grandfather.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Jim.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
How's everybody doing?
Oh, everyone's doing great.
Great, okay. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion and I will thank my telephone partner, Mr. Pizito. Thanks, Jim.
No problem, Jim, thank you.
Okay, a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, we adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night, Jim.
Good night, Joe.